Hello, testing one, two, three, testing one, two. I hope you guys can hear me. Hello, hello. Testing, one, two, three.
I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
And do you hear us, Gina?
Yeah, it sounds like you guys are echoing, but I can hear you. Can you hear me okay? Hey, Mary. Howdy.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Hi, Mrs. Cleveland.
Here.
Mrs. Wyder?
Here.
Dr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Simons?
Present.
At this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve and revise the agenda to go into executive session to discuss staff and personnel matters before the meeting.
Well, we have an executive session planned later in the meeting.
I would like to see if we can do it now. That's just my motion.
Does anyone second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Patterson, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
No.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Three yeses and two no's. Mr. Lockhart, who's going to provide us an executive session?
I'll send a link right now.
Lillian, who is attending?
Just the board members, if I could, if we could.
You guys can go over in the conference room.
Okay, do we have a, Mr. Lockhart, do we have a link or something?
I'm sending a link right now. I'm sending a link to everybody.
I just received it, thank you.
You sent it.
It looks like it's from Christine Patterson, but maybe that's for afterwards.
Okay. Okay. I'm. Are we ready? I move that we come out of executive session at 6:57 PM.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Petter, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore? Mrs. Moore? Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes.
We forgot one.
Mrs. Moore? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Simons.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that, obviously. And we apologize to your audience for that change in our schedule. The next item is the inspirational message from Princeton High School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hawkins. You know, we have had quite a fall this year despite the multiple pandemics we're dealing with as a country and in the world, but we've had so many different great recognition pieces. The high school put together a two-minute and 59-second video showcasing some of our seniors with great messages about Princeton. And without further ado, Mr. Lockhart?
Good evening, Princeton. I'm Ron Balmer, principal at Princeton High School. Welcome to our inspirational message. Our message will be student-led, led by our seniors, the class of 2021. Our students will demonstrate and show you how Princeton has benefited them.
Hello, I'm Ari Turner. I'm a senior at Princeton High School. Princeton has just helped me with everything, all the coaches, the teachers. The teachers just want you to strive to be great. They always want to see you step up the next step, get you in better classes, AP honors. They want to see you do your best. The coaches always put school first.
My name is Janelle Gray. I'm a senior at Princeton, and this is a speech, this is a part of a speech that I wrote for my Rotary contest. It's labeled "To See or Not to See." That is the question. Dear America, what do you see when you look at me? I hope with all my heart that you truly see me. I hope my truth helped you peer into my life. I hope my story will build better relations. I hope this benefits the masses, and I hope this really takes us in the right direction. Sincerely yours, Janelle Gray. I truly love Princeton because it allows me to be myself. It allows me to not fit into the stereotypical mold that was set for me. Like I said, a girl my age and a girl of my color. I love how I can do whatever I want. I can be whatever I want to be here and just be free to be myself.
Hi, my name is Ornella Siakam, and today I will be presenting a short snippet of a poem I titled "Motherland." If you don't know where you're coming from, you will never know where you're going. So how dare I boost my own ego to the point where I rejected who I was and where the heck I came from? I manifested and made it a mission to clear myself of the connection to my own heritage, see my narrative. I wanted to change that. But through Princeton, I learned to appreciate and accept that. Where else would I find myself in a room full of diversity where it'd be an advantage to truly be different?
My name is Joey Lynn, and I'm here to share my experiment. Princeton is my second family to me. From the first time I entered this big group, I can feel the care, the love, the fun, and the happiness every day.
Hi, my name is Madeline Sherwood, and I'll be singing a snippet of a song called "Choscholosa" that I've been learning in class.
Princeton, have a great night, and as always.
Thanks.
So to Mr. Balmer and the high school staff and all the students, they did a great job. They really are, you know, there's some new teachers that we have in the district and a couple new, or at least one new administrator. And when we talk to them, we talk specifically about the Princeton advantage and how unbelievable our students are. And this COVID has really robbed us of so many wonderful opportunities of spending time with these amazing students. But in true Princeton fashion, we do absolutely everything we can to make sure that we continue to make that hashtag Viking difference. So, Mr. Balmer, I know you're very proud of the high school students and staff. They're doing an amazing job, and you certainly saw unbelievable talent there. And I'm sure Ornella is watching this. Ornella, I have a big surprise for you coming up this week, and I think you're gonna really love it. And knowing you, you're probably gonna send me an email tonight trying to get information out of me. But anyway, thank you very much, and it's a great presentation.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. It was great to see the diversity of talents and thoughts and ideas, and so we thank you, Mr. Balmer, for presenting that. Our next item is approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mrs. Petter, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland? Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
The motion passes.
And then, if I may, just very, very quickly, we approved a $100,000 grant through Accelerate Grade Schools, and it's a tremendous honor to introduce the CEO, Chief Executive Officer, who lives in our district and happens to happen to be driving home and stopped by to visit us very quickly. So Brian Neal, Brian's gonna just share a few thoughts about our partnership and, uh, who knows, maybe he has a really big announcement tonight. I don't know, Brian.
I think you took my thunder there, Tom. First of all, I want to thank you all for the invitation to come and just share a little bit about Accelerate Grade Schools and also to Superintendent Burden for the amazing work that you're doing, leading the work across Princeton for all the kids who are, again, going through some very challenging times right now. So I'm really excited about the partnership and just seeing what you all are doing as a district here. By way of just general background, I run a nonprofit foundation that invests in high-quality schools to ensure that kids have an opportunity to go to quality schools regardless of income and status quo, point blank, right? Every kid deserves the opportunity to be able to attend the highest-quality schools. And so we make investments and partner with great districts like Princeton and others to make those investments. I'm really excited because, again, with COVID and with the challenges that we're seeing, we're able to step in and really provide some support for students in challenging times like this. So as Superintendent Burden called out, we're gonna be providing up to $100,000 grant to Princeton City Schools to help with connectivity. That includes devices and remote access to ensure every student is connected throughout these challenging times. We're very excited for the partnership, and we're looking forward to more opportunities to work with Princeton City Schools.
And Brian, but before you leave, you know, is your final gift of $100,000, a grant, if you will? And I know we're soon, if you don't have all the information, you soon will have it, because we had to spend all this money. So on top of your grant, the great work that Susan Wyder did with the closet, collecting money, and then on top of even that, Lieutenant Governor Houstad, it really took a lot of people to make sure that we were gonna be able to do what was pretty gutsy, I think, when we announced a long time ago that we were going to make sure that each of our students is gonna have connectivity, not just in the MiFi's, not just in the Chromebooks, but also the Wi-Fi that's gonna be going up in compute, excuse me, in some of our housing apartment areas. We're gonna put them on the telephone poles, also right outside of our schools. We're gonna really try to make it very expansive, but it was your $100,000 grant really pushed us over the top. So I cannot show more appreciation to Accelerate Grade Schools. I know we have many, many, many conversations over the, over a year now. And really, I, your work is amazing and really appreciate, you know, not only you, Accelerate Grade Schools, GE Aviation, and all your partners.
Thank you so much. Well, we're proud to be a partner in this work. As you called out, it's not just Accelerate Grade Schools, but it's a great partnership with GE Aviation, the Cincinnati Business Committee, Regional Business Committee, and other groups like the Farmer Family Foundation that are really stepping up to ensure all kids across our region have access to great quality opportunities. So we're really excited to partner with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in very quickly.
Thank you very much.
Free to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now for district business, approval of the September 2020 financial report.
I move to approve the September 2020 financial report as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds. Any comments, Mrs. Petter?
Just a couple brief comments, since we're gonna talk about the forecast more a little later. We did receive all of our property tax, real estate revenue this month. Again, that is a month later than normal. They allowed taxpayers to pay a month later because of the pandemic. Just looking at the revenue, again, reminding everyone, the revenue is running always now a little behind because of the 1.4 million cut from the state. We'll see that every month. And we're running, that is being tempered by the increase we received from the tax levy passage last November. So thank goodness, thank goodness for that, because that 1.4 million would have hurt a lot more. And then on the expense side, we saw a little jump in expense. That's because the contracts for the majority of our staff began in September. So we saw the new contract little bumps in September. So you'll see that little bump in expenses. But I'll talk more a little bit later.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You say later? Are you talking about another board meeting or later today?
Later tonight.
Will you call the roll?
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
I keep muting. Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, approval of the resolution and appreciation of veterans.
I move to, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, now I lost her voice. I move to approve the resolution and appreciation of veterans as presented.
Moved in second. Any comments on that?
Please. Yes, I'm gonna have a veteran come up and read, one of our own staff members, Chris Lockhart, who was Army Specialist, and he's gonna read this. And then afterwards, I'm gonna pass this out. I don't know if the Board of Education had a chance to see this, but it was on the front page of the Cincinnati Enquirer, your hometown enquirer. It says Princeton High School Honor with Purple Star Designation, and it showed a beautiful picture of one of our military signings. And this is something that I think we didn't, we get recognized for a lot of different great programs and so forth here, great productions, teams, so forth. This is so unbelievably meaningful, and I'll talk a little bit more about that after the resolution, but I want to pass this down.
Whereas the willingness of America's veterans to serve the country has earned them our lasting gratitude. And whereas the Princeton City School District recognizes the valor and sacrifice of our veterans who fought to protect the democratic ideals that are the foundation of our country, and whereas, time after time, in conflicts across the globe, our veterans have proved that democracy is mightier than tyranny. And whereas our veterans have helped bring freedom to countries around the world. And whereas, free nations and people liberated by American troops are grateful for the long distinguished line of American veterans who have come to their aid. And whereas, in the words of Dwight D. Eisenhower, "Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain." Now, therefore, it be resolved that Princeton City Schools recognizes the valor and sacrifice of all veterans, including those who reside in the Princeton community, those who are in our employ, and extends to them our deepest gratitude for protecting our freedom.
So Chris, thanks for doing such a great job reading that and for paying homage so to you, your fellow veterans. I know Mr. Simons is also a veteran. We have many that are watching tonight. We have many in our employ, as you mentioned. And we have had a great, an unbelievable Veterans Day program for several years, goes way back, and there's, it's amazing. This year, obviously, it's gonna look different. We have taping that's gonna be coming up. We plan to do a We plan to do a great virtual recognition to pay respect and homage to all those who fought, as Chris said, he read valiantly and gave selflessly. I didn't know if the board had any comments.
I did. I just want to thank Mr. Lockhart for his service and also Mr. Simons as well.
Thank you.
We had a wonderful program last board meeting where the, we did have some actual, not actual veterans, but we had additional veterans in place, and that's always good. And especially since, you know, we've had wonderful Veterans Day programs in the past and the situation now, the pandemic forces us to do things a little bit differently, but we're just as proud. So thank you for that. All right. Anything else? Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Widder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item of business is the approval of donation for Safe Routes to School project.
I move to approve the donation for Safe Routes to School project.
I second it. Discussion, Mrs. Pedder?
This is just the final step, we believe, in order to move forward with the Safe Routes to School in Lincoln Heights Village. And the board attorney has prepared this document, and I believe ODOT will now be able to move forward.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, is this publicly known meaning outside of Princeton? Has this been shared with the public pretty prior to this board meeting?
We have had maybe two other board meetings where we have spoken about it. I am not sure what the village has done on their side. I assume that they probably have also had it on their agenda multiple times.
Can you give us a little thumbnail for those that may be in attendance of what this means?
I'll do my best. John, help me if I need help. Fricky. This is some grant money that is available through the state. And I believe they put sidewalks in throughout a community so that students can travel to school safely. I believe that's what it is in a nutshell. Originally, we had to transfer some land to them to allow, was it for ramps maybe even to be added on curves, some ramps and all, and those types of things? So that's what that started. Then we have to do this one more letter so that the construction can begin.
This is one of the rare times, I think, when people name something aptly, Safe Routes to Schools. That really is the name in and of itself. So we've done stuff over the last six years here. We approved something, Evendale, Woodlawn, and now Lincoln Heights. So this is something that's critical. Obviously, getting to and from school is really, really important. But I think that was a great question for the adification of all.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Widder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes. Yes.
Before the next motion, if I may, very quickly, I know that there are many people that are watching right now, waiting for us to have a discussion about what happens if, if the county goes purple. Please be patient. We're gonna, there's gonna be a motion here in a little bit, and we're gonna go away for a little bit, necessary business that's been on the agenda. And then when we come back, we'll get to this as quickly as we can. But just to let you know, it's probably gonna be a minimum of at least 20 minutes before we'd even start thinking about having the conversation, just because of the agenda and where it is. To those people that may want to leave and come back, you could do so. You certainly could stay if you want. But just wanted to make sure we communicated clearly with everybody because I know that many people want to hear this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I move that we go into executive session to discuss under Section 12122G8 of the Ohio Revised Code, negotiations with another political entity in the district.
Second.
It's, Mrs. Pedder, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Widder?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
The motion passes.
And we are back. I move that we come out of executive session. We move in second. Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wyder, Dr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore. Mr. Mrs. Moore.
Yes, sorry, I was muted. Thank you.
Mr. Simons.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
All right. The next item is the five-year forecast. This is better.
Okay, so a couple of years, maybe a year, a couple of years ago, the October forecast was changed to the November forecast. So the board decided that the work session prior to the first meeting in November, we would, we would talk about forecast prior to taking action. So, um, oh, I'm sorry. Gina and Mary, I just sent you an email with the slides.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This form, which we have that simple five financial statement, makes it really easy to see where we are for a three-year period. Now, it is a five-year forecast, but you know, with the state of some of our funding, it really is a good, solid, possibly three-year forecast. This year, it's going to be a challenge because we, we don't know what's going to happen with state funding. We're hoping it's a better outcome for Princeton now. But you can see here, this is that quick snapshot of where we start each fiscal year, what revenues popping in, what revenue expenditures are going out. Then we can see if we're ahead or behind. So in all three of these years, we are in deficit spending. Now, when we passed that tax levy in November, this was the year we were supposed to be out of deficit spending. But that was before COVID, and that was before we lost 1.4 million last year and 1.4 million this year. So you could see, Mr. Burton, where that was, we were going to have our one year that we were going to be out of deficit spending. Now, it's not horrible. Seven hundred thousand dollars could be, I mean, if the state would say, we don't need the full 1.4 million, right? And we're going to give you half of that back. Things could, could look a little more even this year, just depending on what happens.
Don't hold your breath.
Another option is, I mean, this is a whole year full of assumptions. I mean, so what if the worst happens? We go full remote. There are savings, as we saw last year, save a little in transportation, we'll save in certain things. That certainly helps this bottom line, and we adjust. So right now, we have a forecast showing three years, i.e. the whole five years of deficit spending. And then our bottom line cash balance numbers. And so this is a quick snapshot. Good, good reference to have of where we stand cash. On the next chart, just, just the representation, so you can see that revenue and expenditures, you know, they trend fairly evenly in a gentle uphill motion. And then you see the exceptions. Can we explain the exception? So in 2018, we had more revenue because of that tax credit, allowed people to pay their property taxes early. Then in the corresponding year, 2019, of course, they had already prepaid, so real estate property revenue was lower. Then in 2020 was our fun year last year, where we had the 1.4 million cut. So instead of being a little higher, it's a little lower because we saw that cut. 2021, we were expecting to see the big bump from the full collection of our new levy, but then we also have the 1.4 million cut in the state, so.
What's two, 2.8, right?
Total.
Totally. So for anybody, why, when you look at this, this is very frustrating. While we certainly understand that we need to do our part when it comes to COVID and all that. I mean, everybody had to sit, felt pain, and many of our residents certainly have. So, you know, we share with that. But this is, we've done such a good job of controlling expenditures. And especially this year with, with everything going on. Now, we did get some money, but if you look at, if we had 2.8 across the board, we will have already, could have already pushed this levy out further than what we even thought, right, Chris?
Then you have to remember hidden in there, and we're looking at a very large number. You know, when you're looking at $80 million number, you have to remember that we have that TPPT phase out also. That's embedded there, and that's about $950,000 a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's in general, our revenue picture. And then just very flat increase in the out years. It's going to be interesting this year. We're looking at those higher appraisal value increases. Last time we had that, the county was saying 10 to 15%. Princeton did not see that type of an increase. So when I show you some of the things I'm going to look at in the next three weeks, that's one of the things I'm going to talk to some people about. What's the expectation for Princeton in these out years with reappraisal? And does it trend that way all the time, or will we see a difference? On the expenses, so you, you, you see too, I mean, in general, that's again, that gentle trend upwards. And then you see just a little dip in 2020. And that was the first year of student wellness and success money. So that was money that is in a different fund. It's not in the general fund. We moved some of our general fund expenses off there, so you see a little bit of a dip in our expenses for general fund. That's also seen in all these out years. So that's in law. We will continue to forecast that money as if it is throughout the forecast. It is in law. We'll project it that way. If they change law, we will have to adjust the forecast for that. So we are seeing some expenses for the pandemic. Thank goodness, we have a lot of grant sources that are really helping us. Will those grants be extended? You know, we have a couple falling off at the end of the calendar year. We'll have to see if there is additional money coming in the, in 2021. So that's just a great view for Princeton. The next chart, the doughnut, just shows you how, the different sources. So everyone here knows that Princeton is heavily revenue side on local property taxes. And our state is, you know, a quarter of the doughnut. You have to remember that that doughnut starts getting a little smaller unless they change the funding formula because of that $950,000 that is not going to be reimbursed as we phase out. So the gold state resources will get smaller, which will impact the local resources getting larger. That's unfortunate for us. We have hope. We have hope in our new state funding formula. So hang on, this is going to be a great year to watch what goes on with that.
Chris, can I just point something out to the Board of Education? So when you look at that first doughnut, the general fund current year revenues by source, I challenge everybody to look to see where the federal funds come in. That sliver is so small, yet so much of what we have to do, day after day, week after week, month after month, and year after year, is predicated on federal funds. So you could barely see how much money we get in there from federal funds, yet you know, so much of what we have to do are these continued, continued unfunded mandates. Thank you.
Question, and that is, is it a net positive or negative from a financial standpoint with the revenue from the Fed versus the unfunded mandate?
Well, the, you know, there's not close. The amount of unfunded mandates we have, it's, 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 I know I use the word a lot, but, but it's so appropriate. It is cataclysmically different between the unfunded mandates and amount of money we have to spend. You don't have to look very far to look at special education. That, that, we get funded at such a low percentage, and each of our students, it's critical to us. We love them all. We're going to educate, we're going to do all that. But when you talk about what this, what the mandates are, which they don't need to tell us we have to do these things, we would do them because they're right, but we don't get any, we, we get virtually none.
Do we have to stay in this relationship, Steve, like it's an abusive relationship?
Well, I, I, I would tell you, I, I've been, I've been in districts that literally had very, I mean, much, 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 much smaller than this. But the problem is, it's the federal funds that go to the state. And that's how, that's how they get you.
So the state would have an option not to fund us if we reject federal funds?
Or, or just say, we're not going to do state testing, same thing. And we flip our nose up to the state accountability system, same thing. Thirty-four years, I've done a lot of thinking about it, how to not have, be hamstrung by these entities.
So on the expense side, then, everyone, you know, we are a people business. Salary and benefit is now taking 75.5% of our budget. The other than 19% still, and I always tell, we have a lot of people in there, too. So all our bus drivers are paid as a purchase service. We have a lot of support for special ed. It's also paid on a contract basis, too. So we're, of course, a very people-centered business. Uh, the thing you're going to see on a different chart, not tonight, but in three weeks when we do the final, is the capital outlay is going to look a little different. When I arrived here, the district had a five-year capital plan that was about 3 million a year. Uh, the year before, while we were on the ballot, we cut a million off of that. We're now down to about roughly 1.5 for our capital. But some of our capital items truly were not capital. That means they're $5,000 in value in the last five years. So we're making sure from this point forward that we're truly going to have capital in the capital line. So some of that expense will move into the true purchase services and supplies and materials that it was. So instead of coating something capital that was painting, carpeting, which is truly a maintenance-type thing, we're, we're taking, you know, a little money out of that capital budget, moving it into regular maintenance-type budget. So that's something we're going to do. And that was a result, a, a comment from audit. So this final page shows, of course, just this quick in and out of what we have, getting to our bottom cash line. But I wanted the board to see the updated true days cash graphic. Uh, they passed, we passed a policy a couple of years ago that we would maintain 90 days true cash. Uh, at, I think the policy reads two, if we're two years out and not going to meet 90 days, the treasurer will inform the board, and then the board will decide what type of action. So as you can see here, we are looking pretty, pretty good. It looks like in 2024, we're going to creep down at the end of that fiscal year, close to 90, will be just under 100. So that's a, that's a ways out. We should think about that. But we have several unknowns with state funding that could improve this picture considerably. So just, we'll keep this updated, keep this in the back of our mind, so we can move forward. The last slides are, are the notes that I wanted you to be aware of, and some of the things that we talked about in May, and that have now have some answers. So, um, back in May, we didn't know if the student wellness and success dollars would survive. You know, we didn't know if the impact of the state revenue would be so harsh that they would look at, at further cuts. That is, it's still in law moving forward. We received the first half payment. Uh, it goes into the separate fund, reduces general fund expenses. It's a really good thing. We're doing. We, we've already done so many, and always have done so many things that apply to student wellness and success. So we supplanted the money, so it was a savings to the general fund. Question to continue thinking about, will it continue to stay in law? How will that, if it, if it goes away, all those expenses come back into general fund, that adjusts our forecast. How will that, if it, if it goes away, all those expenses come back into general fund, that adjusts our forecast. Um. We didn't know we're gonna have one point four million cut last time we did the forecast. That, that continues, so that isn't in the forecast. We forecasted that in May. We made that assumption that yes, we would receive the same cut, and that actually didn't happen. Um, the unknown impact of property tax collection. So the counties pushed that back. The taxes have been fa- paid. Our fall collection was very good. So uh with our full collection now with the new tax levy passed, um, we don't see any impact there at this time. As things continue through the pandemic, what will the spring collection look like? That's something we'll keep looking at. Um, we didn't know what was gonna happen with our medical insurance. And since then, we've had our rate setting. You approved the new rates, came in at the seven and a half, which is in the forecast. And the medical plan is looking good through September. Uh, we still. The pandemic did, did push back some claims and expenses. People weren't able to seek services. Of course, we're still collecting premiums for the plan right now. As of September, still looking good. We do have a lot of people choosing our high deductible health plan. So they're hitting their out-of-pocket maximums, so a lot of the expense goes directly to the plan. We just have to watch that in this last few months, but. Um, seven point five percent increase what was the forecasted about, and us also negotiated agreement. Um. We didn't know what school year twenty twenty-one was gonna look like. I think a lot of people didn't think we would make it into, in session school this long. I think we, a lot of us thought we would be home. It's going so well. Everybody's doing such a good job. Kids are staying healthy. Teachers are staying healthy, so, I mean. Hopefully we'll stay here. It does come with a little expense. We've received grant money helping us out. Hopefully that will continue. And we might see a little additional grant support in the new year. Ex curricular impact, that was another big question. Uh, we did get to participate this fall. We hope to participate this winter and spring. There are additional costs. Revenues are down. Tickets, you know, just the controls on the ticket sales has hurt. We're just gonna have to keep watching that and how that impacts the budget uh they receive from the board. So, and, and we'll just continue watching that. Uh. I threw this out there uh because of treasures talking and everybody says, just, just, it's just another opportunity to make sure you're right-sized. You know, when, when bad things happen, you, you have to look at your uh. Structure, your entity, and make sure you're doing all the right things for the right reasons, so. Uh, that, we just keep that in the back of our mind too. State revenue has rebounded considerably. Uh, of course, they haven't made up a loss, but they were running ahead of estimate, which is a really good thing for us. That, that hopefully tells us that we won't see further cuts from the state. They have not touched the rainy day fund yet. That's another great thing for our state. So have to see, wait, see what happens. The lottery has rebounded. Apparently, everybody's fixing their homes and gambling. So that is doing, doing really well. They had reven- record revenues July, August, and September. Uh, so, great, you know, any, any positives and good stories? We like to hear that um about. Education is all, is the largest part of our state budget. So cut Patterson, moving forward, the state funding formula. It is a cost to the state, so that's, it's additional cost to the state. So that will be uh. The true story. How, how will, can the legislators handle it? How long will they phase something in? It is such a good plan. It's understandable. It was created by, by people in schools and in school business. Got Republicans and Democrats working together. Schools are important. I think they realize that. It's possibly an opportunity for us to remove that um. You know, the, the issue that non-pubs and pubs have, you know. Separating that out, so it's not money coming out of, of public schools, going to non-pubs. You have a chance for the state to directly fund uh non-public schools. That would be wonderful. Uh, and um, so a lot of great opportunity with state revenue for Princeton. We, you remember, on the old formula, we were severely capped. Five million dollars capped, almost as much as we would receive from the state. I have to believe that a fu- new funding formula is going to be positive for Princeton. Because we were so terribly underfunded in that formula. So, again, there are a lot of hope for us. What I have to do between now and our next meeting is finalizing a few things. So, again, I said, I want to talk to some more people about the impact in the out, out years. What this fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-four look like. Making sure we have as best num- as good numbers as we can for that appraisal uh valuation increase. And what that does to our revenue, state revenue for twenty-two and beyond. I mean, that's gonna be a real big. Uh, guess. I don't know, we'll have those, we won't have those answers by November. Will we have them by May? We have to. Finalizing salary and benefit numbers. Another thing, we want to go through those one more time. It is our largest expense. We want to make sure. We have those as close as possible too. And then we feel really good about purchase services and supplies and materials, but just, again, checking those out years one more time. Anything that we might have forgotten, that we want to include in there, so. Then next meeting, you'll get the giant report, the twenty-seven page report where it breaks down by each section. A lot of detail. And it's a great report. And then I think we do have to settle in session at some point. All of us are starting to use these five uh bypass products, forecast five products. We're now be, as soon as all of us, I mean, uh curriculum people. Everybody is using this. It allows us to put numbers on so many different things and produce. Ad hoc reports and what-if reports and scenarios. I think at some point, we really have to have a little session so the board can see. What this product does for us, and, and the scenarios and, or just be a pass. Great product, but. It looks pretty good considering, like you said, all the things that we're doing right now in, in the pandemic, so, yeah.
Uh, Dr. Hawkins, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, Ms. Pedder, in terms of the salary benefits. Did you notice that if there was an increase in the number of retirements and resignations? Uh, this year compared to last year or previous years?
There, I mean, that's a pretty, it's not a huge number anymore. It's not that instability. It's a fairly trend-oriented number. We haven't had a change in the retirement system that caused that um rush to retire as we've had in the past. We don't have anything that we're hearing about that is going to impact us like that again. We haven't heard from retirement systems about any changes that would, that would cause people to, to rush to retire in fear of losing benefit. But, you know, it's pretty, it's a pretty even number year in, year out. We're prob- we should be getting ready to get. Our number for this year possibly, per full room, early notify. Uh, I think it's a November one deadline, which. So we'll have our first um count of people that are looking to retire. Okay. By next week also.
All right. Well, thank you. And by the way, I like your mask, and when the finance person is smiling, I'm smiling. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. Then, um, Mr. Burton, Board's Workshop and Future Planning.
Thank you, yes. Uh, and just for those following the agenda, we did talk about. Uh, under the consent agenda, we talked specifically about the, the wonderful uh grant we had and great partnership with Accelerate Great Schools. That would develop. So once again, thank you to CEO Brian Neal, Energy Aviation, Accelerate Great Schools. I'm gonna ha- talk about the board workshop after we have this discussion regarding future planning. Um, for those of you who have watched the many board meetings or have seen anything that we put out on social media or just know me. Uh, you know, I'm gonna sometimes hit things just really bluntly, and I will tell you that. You know, July twenty-ninth, we made some unbelievable decisions based upon the information we had. We made decisions that we were gonna come back hybrid. We made decisions to stay six feet. Uh, to be able to guarantee certain things with Wi-Fi, connectivities, and devices. So we made a lot of great decisions during that time period. Uh, by evaluating facts, by data, by talking to different superintendents. Health commissions, depart- health departments, state Board of Education members, state. Superintendents and so forth, the whole lot. So we're gonna continue to move forward by doing that same thing. I will tell you that when you know better, you do better, and so when we look specifically at where we are now. Uh, getting ready to go purple, and I, I'm gonna say this publicly, I believe we rolled in purple on Thursday. Now, we need to understand what that actually means for our schools. So when you look at the very, very beginning, July twenty-ninth, what we said is that we were gonna be full remote if we went purple. January twenty-ninth, myself and our, our whole cabinet, all the leadership academy, everybody heard the same thing. If we were to go purple, essentially, you better not leave your house. It's only necessary travel. It's severe spread, and we're seeing, we're seeing this severe spread. But in those three months, what we have learned is that earlier identification, so if you have symptoms. To get in to your doctors earlier, to test earlier, to make sure there are certain treatments, there's new treatments. And while it's not a hundred percent foolproof, but what they're, what they said then. Is that unless you had a really significant health or, or underlying health issues, you are going to. Be able to make it through this COVID experience. Um, what they've learned is the early identification is critical, the wearing masks, as everybody is. And, and I'm more than six feet away from anybody around me, but just, uh, I don't, I, I don't think I. Speak as clearly as Chris Pedder or the others do with a mask on. I thought it was critical that you understood what I was saying. So as we move forward right now, we're gonna have an authentic conversation about what it actually means to go purple. And so when you look specifically at our plan, which was developed July twenty-ninth. We said if we went remote, excuse me, we went purple as a county, we'd go remote. However, we've learned all these other things. We felt also that if we went purple, we would have seen major spread in schools. On top of that, I remember saying multiple times, it's not an if we go out to remote, it's a when we go out to remote. Well, that when hasn't happened. The W H N has not happened. We've had many wins, by the way, at Princeton, uh, throughout the course of this whole thing, whole pandemic. So we look specifically at what purple meant then. July twenty-ninth, we made this decision, and seeing hardly any spread. If any at all, in schools in general in the state of Ohio. So let me just uh point out a couple very quick facts uh which are relevant. So you know that we have a track, we have a dashboard that's updated every Wednesday. So currently, we have zero student cases that were reported last Wednesday. Zero student cases. We track all staff, student cases, whether they're remote learning. A remote teacher, in person or not, because we feel that we need to track everything so that we actually have a handle. On if there's any type of spread. So currently, we have twenty total cumulative cases. Since we started back in school, twenty. So when you look at this, um, and, and no, currently no students, although we may add, may add one. Here, but I believe it was a remote situation, uh, but we have twenty total cases. Currently, we have twenty-seven in quarantine. And if I remember correctly, only one or two of those had anything to do with quarantining from school. I mean, there was, uh, there were a couple teams outside of the district that had to quarantine, uh, not. Because of anything going on. John Fricki and his entire maintenance custodians, operations team. They've done an amazing job of making sure that we're doing everything that we said we were gonna do, that we promised. Most importantly, our students, but we promised the entire educational community. Make sure we do. We've seen no spread at all. And we do know that um we're clean and we're using the Clorox three sixty and Mr. Fricki, what's the name of that other device? Yes, a sprayer. Thank you, Mr. Fricki. Uh, we do know uh that we're doing it all the time because on Friday, unfortunately, we're. While we were cleaning the room, as we said we were gonna do, and some of the, the spray got pulled up in exhaust system and set a fire alarm off. Every, there was no, fire department had to come out, great quick service, but ultimately, and so we're doing all the right things. So we haven't seen spread in schools. We haven't seen it. What we do know is small family gatherings. You've heard the governor say this before, small family gatherings, people going out to restaurants, bars. And stuff that may be happening, happening in businesses. So the safest place, as somebody referenced, I know earlier to a video I put out. The safest place per Governor Dewine, per Greg Kestrel, among the safest places are schools. So if we were to go to remote, we would take kids from the safest place and staff from the safest place. And put them out where we can't control that environment. Our kids wearing masks, our staff are wearing masks. They're hand sanitizing, they're doing wonderful things face-to-face and with, with a hybrid setup and, and there's remote as well. So we, we continue to see cases in the state of Ohio over two thousand a day. It was just announced again, over two thousand. Again, we know that when you look at positivity rates. So, well, of all those people getting tested, the numbers still remain really low. So we know that there are symptoms, and those symptoms, we, we're getting checked out right away. Uh, anybody who does get a COVID test in Princeton must remain home until they get a result. Now, last Wednesday, uh, in preparation, thinking that we were gonna get this star, this alert. In our county, I shot the governor an email, uh, and really. I say aggressively, but it wasn't negative at all. It was just, hey, Governor, please let everybody know what we know to be true. Which is the fact schools are among, if not the most sa- safe place to be. And I also said, if you get a chance, give me a call. And he called me right around seven, just shortly after seven, and it was a twenty, twenty-five minute conversation. And he promised that he was going to say certain things, which the next day he did. And if you look at the question that he answered from John London, you'll see that. What he told me, well, you won't see what he told me. That was our conversation, but what he told me is what he said in there. Schools have done a great job. We've not seen the spread in schools. Kids need to be in school. That's where they need to be. And so I so appreciate the fact that the governor did reach out to me. I wasn't anticipating it. Did reach out to me, and I can't go into great, great details on, on some of the um other activities. That we're looking at doing, but just know that today, we've been invited to really kind of be on the forefront. In a couple different testing uh campaigns, if you will. Uh, and that's not necessarily testing COVID testing, but that's testing perhaps different devices. Uh, different alert systems in school, so we really feel very fortunate to be. Uh, seen as a school district that's gonna follow protocols and a school district that. Uh, would certainly take advantage of some of these wonderful opportunities. Now with that being said. I wanted to hear from the Board of Education, just some general thoughts, or they may be hearing out, out in the communities, uh, living in the community. I know I hear quite a bit. My wife does, uh, my son does as well, our son does as well. But I just wanted to hear from the Board of Education and general thoughts. Thank you.
All right, who, anyone want to go first? Well, I'll go first.
Um, thank you for that. Uh, you know, the information you had also given us in in our weekly update about the numbers, et cetera, is very helpful. I think, um, I, I think I can agree with the assumption that school is a safe place for kids to be based on what's happening. Even when I hear, um, parents, kids, whatever, talking about a case, maybe that they heard about with the scarlet and gray week, they're going, well, we weren't there last week, so it doesn't affect them. I think the spacing out of, of the way we have our classes and things, it, it is a built-in buffer and a protector of, of kids. So, um, I, I, I feel comfortable, you know, with, with that continuing. It's, it's the best of, of all worlds right now. I.
Thank you.
Gina? Oh, um, I like the chart that you have on the website, which shows the number of cases. But in doing some best practices with other school districts, they even nail it down per school. Because while it's great that you're showing where the COVID cases are, you're, you're showing district-wide the number of COVID cases and whether they be remote or in person, that's good. But, uh, I think it's Mason, went to their website, they show you the COVID cases by school. And what makes that so nice, I think, from a parent's perspective, in many cases for Princeton, it may show many of our schools don't have COVID cases at all. So I think it could be a positive thing. And, um, as I continue to say throughout this pandemic, I'm sure parents will do whatever they feel is best for their child in terms of whether they need to be there in person or whether they need to be learning remotely. I'm sure it's just up to them and it's just wonderful that we're giving them options. Now, I'm glad I'm not in the room with you all right now because according to the state of Ohio and the CDC, there's somebody in that room that's not wearing a mask. So I feel safer at home. But I think that I understand, you know, if you can't be heard without the mask, uh, that's more reinforcement for why I'm here and not there. Thank you.
And I will say, um, and I think I forwarded it to Mr. Burton, and that's why I took my mask down so that I could talk. Um, I have a very good friend who is a parent in this district, but a teacher in another district. And she thinks there's no comparison that Princeton has handled it so much better. I also have someone near and dear to my heart who is a teacher in another district. And I can tell you, the comparison is night and day. Um, we are so well organized and doing things so well. I know there are some risks, but I, I say kudos to Mr. Burton and the rest of the board because we've done a good job.
I, I would like to add that I feel very safe, Susan on the other side of the room and Tom on the other side of the room. I have a seven-foot wingspan, so I feel very safe. But I, I think Princeton has done a very good job from a safety perspective with the pandemic, and that is, uh, congratulations to everyone, administration and board. My only concern, well, I should say my major concern is the learning gap uh, that is starting to show up. And I'm sure that, uh, we will come up with a plan to address that. Because we cannot continue to allow that to occur.
And I say for me, um, I concur with everything that I'm hearing everyone say. Um, I guess my question is, and, and I guess I, I just want it to be said with clarity um, for those who are listening, just in terms of if we go purple, what happens? And I just want to make sure that, you know, it's just with clarity in terms of, so we won't get a hundred million calls. Um, because I hear what you're saying, that the safest place is for kids to be there. Um, but I concur with, uh, Gina in, in that ultimately, I'm, I'm very thankful that we are allowing parents to make that choice. You know, I think that's one of the most responsible things we've done.
Yeah.
Um, is to continue to keep that as front and center because ultimately is, is, it is their choice. Um, but they have the option. And so, um, I've heard only good things about what we've done as well. You know, I, I get the opportunity to talk to many other districts. Um, and it's a continuum of, so what is Princeton doing? And so again, kudos to our team for everything that you've done, uh, to keep our kids safe. But if you can just, just to reiterate what happens if we go purple.
Yeah. And, uh, I wanted to add, I'm glad, like, like Ms. Cleveland said, we haven't been on again, off again. You know, you've got the major school district, yeah, you're starting school, no, you're not starting school. Yeah, you're starting school, you're not, you're not starting school. So I think that puts parents in an awkward situation. And even in, though we're offering options, some parents still say it puts them in an awkward situation. But this is one of those avoidable thing, unavoidable things. And, and I think, Mr. Burton, we're doing the best we can with, with what we have to work with. And like Ms. Cleveland said, what is gonna happen if we go purple? Can you speak to that?
I wanted to make sure that the Board of Education had an opportunity to share their thoughts, concerns. I did not hear anybody express any concern about staying hybrid. Uh, I think it's really important to have everybody understand that the board is fully supportive of this. What the move, if we choose to stay, I didn't hear anybody express any concern at all about coming back or staying hybrid, uh, because again, when you just look at the numbers, it's very, very clear. Um, my recommendations that we stay hybrid, my recommendation, we don't change one thing that we're doing right now other than the fact that we continue to evaluate and look to see if maybe we could bring more kids back. Uh, right now, certainly, it would fly in the face of conventional wisdom, right? We're getting ready to go purple. Why would you even be thinking about bringing kids back? Again, we have to always think that because we know what the data shows. The data does not show transmission in schools. Now, that is not my recommendation at this point. My recommendation is that we change our plan, which we submitted again July twenty ninth, when we did not know nearly what we know right now. And we changed that on our website and everywhere else, and we say that we will evaluate the data and based upon the data that we see, transmission in schools and so forth, if we need to make that move, we will make that move to go to remote. The nice thing about what we had in July was really, really clear. And we know that people get frustrated with ambiguity. I think everybody does. And when you look specifically at this, we are looking internally, in fact, Dr. Phillips today, Tanya West, right, the whole CIA team, curriculum instruction assessment team, got together looking at a metrics that we can use an index to internally, to look at that, to say, okay, now we have, now we need to look to go into remote. And then once we get that all designed, we'll let everybody know. And the difference with that is that it's internal. And, you know, it's, this has been very interesting. I've received phone calls, text messages, Facebook messages, uh, emails and so forth, specifically from people, phone calls as well, from people that are saying, we love the hybrid, stay hybrid. People say we need to come back in person all the time, every day, you need to do more for my child. I've seen emails, phone calls, whatever, saying, uh, you need to go remote because this is what the governor said. So I've seen, I've seen just about every single possible, uh, situation uh, from a parental aspect. I will say this, that if, if parents need to feel that they should go remote, we've always had that as an option. That's not going to change. But I would challenge all the parents to say this, that if you do that, which is your right, you could do that, we're making that available for everybody, please make sure you don't let your child leave that house during the course of the day and run around. Have great understanding of what they're doing during the course of the day, that they're staying on top of things academically. They're making sure that they're zooming in or doing Google meets and making sure they do work. And don't let them run around the community or else the, your concerns about what's happening in school, it actually becomes exasperated at home because they're doing things they shouldn't be doing. In school, our kids are wearing masks. Our kids are amazed, they're amazed. They're wearing masks, they're hand sanitizing, they're doing the right thing. Our staff, second to none. And that includes everybody, all staff. I'm talking about custodians, security, cafeteria, grounds, maintenance, teachers, administrators, support staff, they're amazed. We're doing the right thing in school. If you choose to go remote, please follow the protocols we're following at school. Please do that. And, you know, I'm not trying to hit parents hard or whatever, but, you know, some parents, and I think rightfully so, ask this question, why do you need to know the choice so early for second semester? Well, we have to schedule. We have eighteen hundred students that could come back, that chose semester only. If all of those students would come back, we would have a very short period of time to try to schedule. Right now, we've only had five hundred and thirty-three responses out of eighteen hundred. So we need a lot of responses on that survey. We have gone around the community, we continue to send it out. We're getting ready to do all kinds of phone calls. We need to know your choices. And we apologize that we have to know it so early, but we have to know for scheduling. So if you're concerned, choose in person. And then if you have to down the line, if you don't like what you see when your son or daughter is in school, then you have other options. But currently, we know that sixty-three percent of the children that have, of the families that have filled this out, sixty-three percent are still choosing to go remote. But we still have a, a nice large number that's gonna come back. And when they come back, we have to make sure schedules are, are set. We have to make sure that if you have to move desks, equipment, classrooms, we have, we may have to do so many things to get ready for the number of kids that are coming back, which is why we have to get that information sooner than later. And when you think about it, scheduling is done, the following, the scheduling is done in February or March of the following year, of the year we're in for next year, sorry. Uh, so we really have to make sure that we get the, we get the selections. So again, again, my recommendation is that we change the plan and the plan says purple, we will evaluate the situations. When we look at the indicators to go purple, the indicators to go purple. And if it's not right on the website, we'll make sure the, the seven indicators on the website, so you can see for yourself what these indicators are. But let me just for one second. So indicator one are new cases. Now, there's a lot of other verbiage that just makes it easy, right? So the first indicator, are we seeing new cases, uh, that are significant? Must be below fifty per capita, and we're over a hundred. So not in the schools, in the county. So if you look at the second indicator, there are new cases of, and for five consecutive days increase. So if they increase for five consecutive days, that's a flag. You look at the third indicator, that's, uh, this is, has to do with non-congregate cases. The metric is looking to see if COVID is community spread or a function of congregant settings, nursing homes and so forth. So the fourth one is emergency room, or, excuse me, emergency department, they're saying, not emergency room, I don't want to confuse anybody, same thing a lot of people think, but emergency department visits, are they increasing? Fifth one is outpatient visits. What does that look like? Are they increasing? The sixth indicator, a hospitali- hospitalizations. So how many hospital admissions are occurring? And the seventh are ICU, intensive care unit bed, the occupancies. So when you look at multiple of those indicators, those are really about the community outside of the school. Now, not that there can't be kids that have COVID, that have been sick, and heaven forbid, that never happens again to any other person in general, but, you know, it's always so much more difficult when it's a, a young child. But ultimately, when you look at all these indicators and all these indicators, we believe are gonna be flat. And, you know, we believe they're gonna be flagged because we're doing our due diligence and we're talking to, again, Greg Kestrel and his staff at Hamilton County Public Health, they've been amazing. Matt Clayton at Springdale, it's been amazing. We're fortunate to have Springdale have a health department. So we've been in contact there, local superintendents, Ohio Department of Health, the governor, the lieutenant governor, all kinds of legislators, representatives. We are trying to get as much information as we possibly can, but we believe that it's gonna be purple. And that the recommendation, again, just to be clear, and thank you, this is Cleveland, just to be really, really clear, the recommendation is to move like the red language, if you will, the language that's in the red category to purple. And that's basically evaluating the, you know, the number of cases and so forth. And then if we need to go remote, we're not gonna put kids in harm's way. But again, I started by saying, when you know better, you do better. There's a lot of data we have, a lot of information we have now that we did not have July twenty ninth.
Well, I was gonna say, well, you know, given that information, I like the idea of not responding just because it's purple, but because, again, looking at numbers and keeping our kids occupied, because, I mean, quite frankly, as you said, if we close, then kids are doing who knows what with, with the time. So I, you know, I feel comfortable with evaluating that even if we're in purple and continuing to evaluate it as we look at it day to day to day, but not that it's an automatic, uh, we close school.
So I think what I hear you saying is, even though months ago, when we asked you, what will we do if we go purple? I thought you said we would probably make the district remote. But a lot has happened since then, and we've learned a lot since then. So what I think I hear you saying tonight is, when we, not if we go purple, but when we go purple, you're gonna decide on a case-by-case basis, on a daily basis, whether we'll go all remote or not. So is there like a certain small number of kids that have to show up for you to totally go remote? Cause I, I'm trying to figure out, and, and maybe it's something that, that you already know, but if, if it turns out there's only two kids showing up for a class, per class, I mean, would, would, is it at that point where you would see that you have to go all the way remote because parents are keeping their kids at home?
I would say this again, very respectfully to all the parents, that the safest place is as we're finding. Safer than, you know, small family gatherings, for sure. That's where we see, we're seeing the community spread. The safest place are in the schools. We will continue to have six feet separation. We've done a great job social distancing. Again, being part of a lot of the inner workings of some of the future protocols that are coming down from the state, we're gonna be actively involved in some of those, you know, great, there's some of the great work that's being done there. Uh, we will always look at the data. We're basically, that when you remember, as you remember, as I said back in July as well, that if it becomes red, we will look at all the data. And that's what we've done. In fact, when it was red, when we looked at that, many of the other, and we're seeing this, by the way, in all the schools across, across the tri-state area, they're all saying the same thing. That while there are COVID cases that are positive, we're not seeing the community spread in schools. Now, many people may have to quarantine because they're not, they're within six feet. But they're not seeing the spread because people are wearing masks and they have hand sanitizer or they use hand sanitizers and so forth. So as long as we do that, we're gonna help stop the spread of COVID. But, you know, quite frankly, you know, you. But, you know, quite frankly, you know, you go to family gatherings and while, you know. I am not wearing a mask right now, and I feel, uh, you know, again, we're facing basically the same direction. This is, this is what we've been told. Uh, again, by, by all the leading medical epidemiologists and so forth, but. Going, going out of town is a risk. You need to wear a face mask. You need to apply hand sanitizer, or better yet, wash your hands for twenty seconds. Those are, those are tried and true practices. So I will say this, that, um, we will look at data each and every day. Uh, I think our community has been, is certainly notified each case. And, you know, we'll, we could look at the tracker all we want. Uh, I think the all-call system that I've been using to notify parents in each building where there is a case. Has been as flawless as you could imagine, the great work by Dr. Jameson and Tricia Roddy doing the work. Uh, to make sure those notify, notifications go on in a timely fashion. So yes, if it is, if it is purple, when it is purple on Thursday, I believe it's a win. When it's purple on Thursday, we stay the course. We continue to do what we're doing in schools. And the reason why, one of the biggest questions people ask is, why can't I just go remote one day? And then if I feel better, come back to school the next day, and then if I don't feel right, go back remote the next day. The flip-flop and the scheduling and transportation and so forth, it is much, I mean. It's arduous, to say the least, uh, to, to kind of go back and forth. And we are gonna be working right up to the, right up to January. To make sure that we have all the schedules in place for all the students that are gonna be coming back from first semester remote.
Uh, um, just a quick question from Mary, um. Can you speak to, uh, the anticipation of when we go purple? Uh, as to will there be any mandates or do you anticipate any mandates? Um, as it pertains to the schools? And I ask that, um, because obviously people were told if we go purple, then that means you don't, to what you said earlier. You don't go out of your house, you don't do this, you don't do that. It's almost back into complete quarantine. Um, for mostly everything else, meaning a lot of businesses, it'll, it'll, it'll be different. So can you speak to that in terms of the recommendation? And I know you're speaking to it in the sense that you're sharing. Um, you know, the, the trans, transmission rates are very, very low for schools. But is there any anticipation so that people understand that in terms of when we go purple?
Thank you. Yes, I can certainly speak to that. There is, the, the alert system is advisory, and that is it. Governor talked about that again. It's advisory. Uh, there are gonna be no mandates for schools, no mandates for businesses. No mandates for restaurants. You go purple, governor's not gonna say you have to change all this stuff. And if for some reason he changed everything that he's always said, and he does something, then we're gonna follow what he says. So if there's a mandate to close schools, but he's been very, very clear, and so is Greg Kesterman. Very, very clear that that's not what they're going to do. They are not gonna do that. And the only thing that I, only change I did here that may happen. Is that bars which close at ten, they may be extended to eleven. That's literally the only thing I heard that may change any type of order, if you will. So there's gonna be no orders, they're gonna fall out, and again, if they do, we'll follow them, no problem. If I'm completely wrong and they shut down the county and they say schools are unsafe. Then we're gonna do absolutely what they, what they tell us to do, no problem at all. If the guidance says you should do this, we're gonna follow the guidance, even if it's not an order. But nobody's saying that right now, and quite frankly, all of us should feel a little certain way, if you will. Uh, if there's nothing that happens with businesses, nothing that happens with restaurants and bars, and that's where we're seeing transmission. There, and nothing with, with fa- small family gatherings. If nothing is happening in those cases. And that's where we're seeing the transmission, why would we even think about changing what we're doing? We know our students need to be in school face-to-face, more, not less. They need to be more, even though there's great work that's being done, we know that we, our kids need to be in front of our teacher.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I, I feel that, um, the plan appears to be reasonable. Uh, but I would like to see us create a plan for the learning gap, bridging that learning gap, closing that learning gap. And from everything I've read. Uh, from other, uh, like Wall Street Journal, et cetera, New York Times, Post. Washington Post, that is. There is an established learning gap. A lot of it is socioeconomic. And the longer the kids are behind, there has repercussions down the line, so. I just don't want us to focus on the medical piece. If we're safe, we have to move to the next step, which is recapturing. The education.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a double-edged sword, right? So you wanna be safe, you wanna have six feet, you wanna do that. But then kids are gonna be at home, and while there's information, there's work being done by our students at home, it's different. We know that. It's just different. Our, if our teachers weren't great, well, then I'd say, okay, let them be at home and they could teach themselves. But our teachers do wonderful work, and our kids will be better in front of them. I will say this very, very, uh, succinctly. On October twenty-sixth, we are going to have a robust summer school program. And to all the students that may be listening, and all the parents that may be listening. If your son and daughter, or daughters are not doing what they need to do during this time. And they're not meeting the expectations of the teachers, they will be in summer school this summer. And I'm not trying to be mean or disrespectful, but I, we care that much. About your son and daughter, sons and daughters, what they're learning and their future. And not saying you don't, but summer is gonna be used to bridge that gap. And I know it's not just gonna be one summer. Some of our students have just moved into the community in the last, I don't know, year or two. Unfortunately, where they, they came in, they're a couple of grade levels behind. This certainly is not helping. It's not. Uh, all the parents that are listening, you know, tomorrow, if your son or daughter doesn't think they have anything to do, pick up a book. And if you need a book, you could call us. We'll drop off all the books you could use. We will take care of that. It is critical, we can't, every day, our children should be learning. Every day, our children should be doing something to make them smarter, to make them more prepared. When they're in school, we take care of that in a lot of ext- extents. But to accent that learning, it's absolutely critical to make sure you do that. By reading, by having those deep embedded, great conversations that you guys have at home. But that is part of the plan, is that we know that you can't be out as much as you were last year. And the hybrid model this year, if, or remote model. And even then, again, I keep saying this, but there's, there's great work that's being done, but it's different. And we know that their gaps are going to exist. And we're going to address those, and parents will get plenty of notification. We're gonna provide transportation, we'll provide great instruction, and the kids are going to have to come in there. We all, as a community, have to care that much about our children's learning. So that we're gonna, unfortunately, they're not gonna have the summers that they've had before. It's that important.
So, uh, I think I hear your plan. I'm not sure if I totally understand, but I think I, I hear you saying you're gonna wait and see what happens. When, not if we turn purple, but when we turn purple, and based on the data and information you receive. You'll, you'll make some decisions that way. But I would propose that. Once we go purple, that this board, uh, convene a special meeting. And hear about the new information that the superintendent may have. And, uh, so that we'll be more, um, uh, aware of how intense the situation may or may not be. But, uh, thank you for that, and, uh. I, I, I'm just glad we got our finger on the pulse, and it, it looks like other districts are. Tending to copy what we're doing in terms of giving parents an option, and, and that's good to give them the option. Thank you.
Well, I would say outside of having an amazing leadership team here, all the districts, local districts, we've all really partnered together. And so there are, it's, it's interesting. I mean, all the superintendents would say the same thing. That we got this piece from this school district, this piece from that school district, and we all put it together, make it our own. Inside the school district, because, you know, we all have to stand together. And that's what we're doing regionally, and we're certainly doing that at Princeton. I appreciate the board standing with me. And making just a very clear statement to our public. That we're gonna do and continue to make decisions on what's best for each student, and what's best for the students at Princeton. Right now that are hybrid is to stay hybrid. If you're remote, you know that you're staying remote to at least the second semester. But please make sure that you fill out the survey, and if you. In fact, we'll send, we'll send it out again. We'll do another, uh, mass email to all those, uh, first semester remote students. And we'll get that out one more time. Um, and then if you see a number from the school, please pick up, cause we're calling to help you. Fill out the forms. Thank you.
Any other input? Cleveland, more, anything else?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
No, thanks.
So.
The next, let me sure. So the next piece, uh, had, on there was a board workshop. You know, we've talked about this a couple of different times. We have done board workshops before in the past. Myself and Dr. Hawkins. Been in contact with, uh, some locals, uh, former superintendents that also worked for the county. Adrian James, who, uh, actually lived in Princeton School District, very decorated, great former superintendent. And very knowledgeable, uh, with boards of education, as well as Bill Sears, again. A local superintendent, great success. They both work through Hamilton County. And when asked to put together some, some different workshop topics. And the boards, uh, received this, this email, but just let me read you the sessions. That they recommend highly effective collaborative teams. That's the first session that they would like to focus on. And, uh, they talk about the foundation of a high-performing team is trust. Uh, trust comes from teamwork. Teamwork will promote collaborative problem-solving and consensus building. Session two will be focused on the wildly important. And that is during this tumultuous time caused by COVID, we're in a state of constant change and whirlwind. Reacting to the whirlwind becomes urgent and can detract from wildly important goals of the district. So, uh, that's the second session. Third session is lead and lag measures to drive collective success. Understand the lead and lag measures is vital for continuous improvement. The state report card and other achievement data are examples of lag measures. I think that was, I was so happy to hear that because, you know, with state testing. It's one time a year. I, I hundred percent believe in accountability, but the accountability is. It should be about the consistency of assessment, the formative assessment we do each and every day. I'd rather have something that measures us in the fall, the winter, spring. That certainly is gonna be, gonna tell a picture of student growth. And we know, as I mentioned earlier, some of our students are a couple of grade levels behind that have transferred into the district. We're working really, really hard. To catch them up and doing everything that we possibly can. Uh, we can't just grow them one year and get them back on track. We have to grow them more than one year. If you're saying, if you're telling me the best way to do that is to get. The results of a state mandated test, which is in April, and you get those results unofficial in June. And then by the time you get them, it's the following September, that is insane to me. Now, while I know we do have a lot of information, we do get the data, we do see that during the summer. But if you really try, if you're really trying to be responsive, we need to get that information earlier, not later. But that is a lag measure. When you look at a lead measure, it can tell you goals are likely to be achieved. So when you look at MAP, when you look at some of the other data that we have. When you look at goals that we set forth in Princeton. And then you look specifically at the measures of success, that those are really critical, those are lead measures. And then keeping a compelling scorecard and a cadence of accountability is a fourth session. And, uh, you know, the, the biggest sentence in that descriptive paragraph is this is the discipline of engagement. And it's accomplished through the development of a simple but compelling scorecard for the lead measures. The scorecard is reviewed regularly to create a rhythm of accountability. Again, we are educators, we are not afraid of accountability. We live it each and every day, because you have to look our face in the mirror. We look ourselves in the mirror. The accountability of doing the right thing, and you look at yourself. And everybody, when they go to bed, if you're, if you're a great educator, when you go to bed. You sometimes struggle because you know you could have done more during the course of the day. And you may struggle because you're excited to get up the next day to do something different, to engage. So, um, those are the workshop items. Uh, it would be beholden then on the Board of Education, and typically what the workshop would include, the Board of Education. The treasurer and the superintendent, but we'd be pleased to offer that opportunity to anybody who you would want, Dr. Hawkins and the rest of the board. And then, uh, those, all, all they need is, all they need are dates. And then if they get the dates, then they'll plug them in and we'll be ready to roll.
So, um, will you send us, um, dates or can we do a doodle type thing? I mean, are they gonna be. During the day, weekends, or you know what their expectation is?
I, they're really flexible. Um, and by, and by the way, just full transparency, we did say that the cost is two thousand dollars, five hundred per unit. Um, so we're paying them, and they're, they've always been flexible, but they'll be flexible. Uh, the, the work typically that we've had great success with, has been on a weekend. Cause everyone's been able to make typically a Saturday morning. I'll be glad to send out a doodle to see what works best for everybody. Uh, I think there needs to be two. We need to look at the day and the date.
Um, is there any, um, from the board, any other additional input or anything in terms of dates? Days or anyone else being added to the team? No, no particular leaning, day, middle of the week or the weekend?
I, I just wanted to say I'm very flexible. Um, but, um, yeah, I'll probably be attending, but remotely.
Can you give some time for those, like, ideals, just so we have more to work with and not just starting off?
I'd say give, give some options. That's the only thing I could say is, based on whatever the options are, but I can be flexible as well.
Yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll send out a doodle tomorrow, and it'll have, um, the different session. We'll say session one, and then we'll have a series of dates, session two, series of dates and so forth. Uh, they like to spread those out a little bit, and just so that everybody knows the timing itself. They allot for an hour and a half to two hours for each session, to just let everybody know.
Thank you.
And then the, the, the only, the last thing that I'd like to say is this, that, um, we would never. Put kids in harm's way. We are going to always put our best foot forward. We're gonna do every single thing we can to advance the learning of each student. We are not perfect. We're working really, really hard. And again, praising all the staff and all that stuff is not enough for the great work that they're doing. And, you know, we have, we have a team. Uh, you know, earlier this, well, when, when the COVID first happened to all of us and we were out, we had these shirts, we stand together, we were Vikings. We continue to feel that very strong. Uh, we've had great success, all these honors that we received. Middle school received an honor of, of being the top middle school in the state, that was, that was like vote, excuse me, in the, in our area, greater Cincinnati. That was, like, we didn't. That was like, we didn't even know that that was happening, but people voted because they feel so strongly. We had great recognition from food service too, with some work that they're doing with our elementary schools as well. So we continue to see this great work, but we know we have to do things a little bit different each day and we're working very, very hard. So just know, we appreciate the trust you have in us to send your students, whether remotely, hybrid, or every day if they're playing sports. We're going to continue to do what we need to do to provide a safe environment for each student and staff and entire educational community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring to the board this time? All right. Then I move that we go into executive session under 12122G1 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purposes of Personnel session.
Second.
The move in second. Mr. Sutter, please call the roll.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes. Motion passed. There will be no additional action after this second session, but we do still, I guess, have to return to adjourn. Thank you.
Okay, we're just gonna, we just have to adjourn, we're just gonna go ahead and. Okay, so at this time, at uh. Okay, um, we, I move for adjournment of the executive session at ten oh eight P M.
Second.
Then moved in seconds, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the, all those opposed. That motion passes, I now move to adjourn the meeting for today at ten oh nine, second. Been moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the meeting, go bye.